All right. My name is Dean Gidry. I am the Communication and Educational Technology Coordinator for the parish. And basically in Georgia, setting up our awards night programs. Tonight, we have the pleasure of awarding these students with some of their accomplishments. I'm not going to continue on right now because I don't want to steal any honor. What I'll do right now is I will turn it over to our Acting Superintendent, Mr. Jared Martin, and I will be the one taking the pictures of Mr. Martin along with Board President, Elizabeth Hudson. So at this, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is my first time performing this role, so if I mess up, just be patient. But today's been a good day because we were able to do a few things today. We released a press release that showcased LaFouche Parish's accomplishments. And LaFouche Parish is still ranked third in the state. Ascension Parish fell to fourth, and Vermillion Parish came up to second, and LaFouche Parish is still third. So our schools are doing really well. And they're doing well because of kids like this. So tonight, we're going to acknowledge all the accomplishments of our kids, and I think choir, FFA, academic accomplishments, and everything in between. So that's why we're here today, all of the accomplishments of your children. But our schools are just doing really, really well, and I'm proud to represent them. So we have Mr. Delcum and Mr. Lee, who are going to present the specific award. And so I'll yield to Mr. Delcum first.
Right. Our first student to be recognized is being recognized because she was named a commended student for the year 2020 by the National Merit Scholarship Program. Students entered into that competition by taking the 2018 preliminary SAT qualifying test. And out of over a million and a half students across the country, a million and a half students across the country that took this test, only a very small percentage of those were recognized as a commended student. I was just talking to her, and she was... I would have had to take the ACT twice to get the shit. So at this time, we would like to recognize, as a commended student of the National Merit Scholarship Program, Ms. Megan Shassell from South LaFouche High School.
Okay, so we're going to take pictures, and you guys want to take it? Right here first?
Oh.
Hold it. Let me make sure everybody is smiling. All right, now.
And Ms. Jeremy, all of her success has to do with her middle school years, just to be...
I would like to give you a small credit, but I had her in elementary, and then I...
Our next student to be recognized this evening placed first place this summer in horse showmanship at the Louisiana... So this is state level. Louisiana 4H and FFA Horse Show this past summer. And so at this time, we'd like to congratulate and recognize Ms. Demi Benoit of East Tibbetts Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Benoit. Let's get a picture. Here we go. Congratulations. This middle school, FFA chapter from Lockport Middle School, was awarded the top middle school in the entire state of Louisiana in a judging event for floral culture. So basically, they're the state champs. So at this time, we'd like to recognize, again, from Lockport Middle, Dawson Dupren, Liam Murley, Jada Phillips, and Kara Plazos. Blue Middle School. Both of these students were recognized, and I guess they had to try out and become part of the Louisiana American Coral Directors Association for 2019 All-State Youth Mixed Choir. Good job. Okay, so let's get Liam and Dawson up and hold the middle. So we have Charles Damatos and Veronica Galliano of Bayou Blue Middle School. And I'll get right here. And if we can see Mr. Gidry. Perfect. Everybody here?
Wait, don't move. One more. All right, anyone in the back?
Congratulations, kids. Choir by the Louisiana Coral Directors Association. First, from Bayou Blue Middle School, we have Madeline Fod. Also, in the 2019 All-State Children's Choir from Lockport Middle School, we have Madeline Fosen. Next, we have one student who was selected to the Louisiana Coral Directors Association 2019 All-State Women's Choir from Central LaFouche High School, Ms. Kristin Richard. And we would like to now recognize this student who was selected to the Louisiana Coral Directors Association 2019 All-State Youth Treble Choir from Lockport Middle School, Jenna Garner. Good evening, everyone. It is my honor and my privilege to introduce to you Mr. Cooper Odo. Cooper is a fifth-grade student at Bayou Blue Upper Elementary School. He is a choir member. He was selected to be a member of the Louisiana American Coral Directors Association 2019 All-State Youth Mixed Choir. And again, it is my honor to recognize Ms. Harper Jacobs. She is a fifth-grade student at Bayou Blue Upper Elementary School. She is a choir member. She was selected to be a member of the Louisiana American Coral Directors Association 2019 All-State Children's Choir. Congratulations. And again, it is my honor to recognize Ms. Parker Jacobs. She is a fifth-grade student at Bayou Blue Upper Elementary School. She is a choir member. She was selected to be a member of the Louisiana American Coral Directors Association 2019 All-State Children's Choir. And again, it is my honor to recognize Ms. Parker Jacobs. She is a fifth-grade student at Bayou Blue Upper Elementary School. She is a choir member. She was selected to be a member of the Louisiana American Coral Directors Association 2019 All-State Children's Choir. Congratulations. And again, it is my honor to recognize Ms. Harper Jacobs. She is a fifth-grade student at Bayou Blue Upper Elementary School. She is a choir member. She was selected to be a member of the Louisiana American Coral Directors Association 2019 All-State Children's Choir. Congratulations. And again, it is my honor to recognize Ms. Harper Jacobs. She is a fifth-grade student at Bayou Blue Upper Elementary School. She is a choir member. She was selected to be a member of the Louisiana American Coral Directors Association 2019 All-State Children's Choir. Congratulations. Thank you for attending. This was great. We have some great singers, too. Listen, I will have all these pictures online, so if you didn't get a picture, you can be able to right-click on the picture and download it. Thank you, guys, for coming.
All the meaning to honor, invocation by Mr. Al Archer, District 13, and pledge allegiance by Mr. Al Archer, District 13.
In the name of the Father, and of the Holy Spirit, and in grace of the Lord, as we gather together in your name, we ask that you guide us and lead us tonight for a very productive meeting. We noted that we put you first; everything else good follows. We ask that you continue to bless our school, bless our kids, and bless our employees as they continue to do well and do your will. We ask all to listen in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Babin.
Here.
Ms. Huddleston.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Petita.
Here.
Dr. Barrow.
Here.
Dr. Gia.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dupren.
Here.
Mr. Schwest.
Here.
Mr. Plazos.
Here.
Mr. DePlantis.
Here.
Mr. Dissler.
Here.
Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Troy Dupren.
Here.
This afternoon, I've hiked conversations with Mr. Robbie Dissler, and he wishes to address the board and have an announcement that will have agenda items seven seen no longer necessary.
Good evening. As most of you may know, there has been allegations made against me. This was a personal matter between myself and another individual. Since those allegations have been made, I have fully settled this matter with the other individual, but there is still a legal matter that has not been resolved. After reflection of the agenda item for tonight's meeting discussing my personal allegations and how it affects the school board and district, I, along with my family and my attorney, have decided that my continued involvement as a school board member does not seem to be in the best interest for our school board members, our school district, my family, and myself. So with that being said, I resign from the LaFouche Parish School Board effective...
Number two, board consent agenda. Approval of board consent agenda items. D, minutes of regular board meeting held October 2nd, 2019. C, minutes of transportation committee meeting held October 15th, 2019. D, landed facilities management committee meeting held October 15th, 2019. E, minutes of insurance committee meeting held October 6th, 2019. F, minutes of finance committee meeting held October 16th, 2019. G, minutes of policy and procedure committee meeting held October 17th, 2019. H, minutes of academics committee meeting held October 17th, 2019. I, minutes of special board meeting held October 30th, 2019. And J, minutes of special board meeting held November 4th, 2019. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Tina Babin, second by Mr. Barry Plazos. Any comments from the public? Any comments regarding this agenda item from the board? If not, we'll vote. Three, to approve landing facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held October 50th, 2019. Mr. Randy Schwest.
Thank you, Madam President. Eight, to accept the credit change order in the amount of $16,745.99 for the remaining contingency fund for the security upgrade projects at Tibbetts High School. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Ms. Marion Petita. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
B, to accept the high bid in the amount of $551 from Jared Gidry for a campsite release, namely VR-1 on Section 16, Township 19S, Range 22 East, Bayou Grapiel area. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Ray Bernard. Is there any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
C, to hire an appraiser, namely Murphy Appraisal Services, for the appraisal of the old Chagvee Elementary School site and the old District 7 school site. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
E, to approve the only responsive and responsible bidder, direct parts and services for chill and compressor replacements for a one-year term. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Troy Dupren. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
E, to approve the only responsive and responsible bidder, Randall Shipyard LLC for limestone 57 at $35.94 per tonne and crushed limestone 610 at $34.84 per tonne for a one-year term. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Joey DePlantis. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
F, to hire an appraiser, namely Murphy Appraisal Services, for the appraisal of the old Chagvee Elementary School site and the old District 7 school site. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote.
E, to approve the only responsive and responsible bidder, direct parts and services for chill and compressor replacements for a one-year term. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Troy Dupren. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote.
E, to approve the only responsive and responsible bidder, Randall Shipyard LLC for limestone 57 at $35.94 per tonne and crushed limestone 610 at $34.84 per tonne for a one-year term. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Joey DePlantis. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
F, to authorize advertisements for requests or proposals for grass cutting services for LaFouche Parish School District. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Barry Plazos. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote.
G, to surplus 30 pieces of old groundkeeping equipment. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Randy Schwest, second by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote.
H, to authorize the purchase of a L-47 Kubota tractor with the trade-in of old groundkeeping equipment for the amount of $35,263.16 under state contract from M&amp;L Industries. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Ms. Marion Petita. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? Ms. Boujwa?
I'm just happy to see that... I'm hoping that this does pass because I know the crew really needs this tractor, and it's going to help them be more safe and efficient. And along with that, the company is going to buy those 30 pieces of old groundkeeping that we just approved to put on surplus, so it's a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa, and I can't agree more. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passed unanimously.
I, to hire Castasins Castanos Goodman Butler Engineers for the design and fitting of the Central LaFouche High School sewer plant replacement project and to request to advertise for bids when contract documents are complete. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwest, second by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Four, approval of insurance committee recommendations as per meeting held October 16th, 2019. Mr. Barry Plazos.
Thank you, Madam President. Eight, to approve the acceptance of the 2020 Option 1 proposal from VCS with a specific deductible of $300,000 and with premiums of $24.01 per month, single plant, and $38.69 per month, dependent plant.
Motion by Mr. Barry Plazos, second by Mr. Al Archer. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Five, approval of finance committee meeting recommendations as per meeting held October 16th, 2019. Dr. Mary Bro.
Thank you. Eight, to approve the submission for E-Rate funding for wireless network at least $2,307... $2,307,057 with E-Rate funding 80%, and IT budget funding, the remaining 20%.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, second by Ms. Tina Babin. Is there any discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote.
B, to approve the advertisement for RFP for E-Rate Project District Wireless Network and Data Center 2020. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, second by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote.
C, receive report from Acting Superintendent Jared Martin for the consideration for a half-cent sales tax, sales and use tax proposition, and take appropriate action.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Ray Bernard, second, Ms. Marion Petita. Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am. What I'm presenting to the board tonight for approval is a timeline submitted by the law offices of Foley and Judeal. Attached in board docs, you will see a timeline that illustrates the December 4th school board announcement and notification to state centers and representatives of the intent to call the election. And also notable, the January 8th school board calling the election, where the proposal would have to be complete. It outlines all of the requisite dates required of the board to go forward with the election on May 9th. What's important to note is that by adopting this timeline, it authorizes me to place on the agenda those items required to get us to that May 9th election. And by January 8th, the board will have to decide the final language that the proposal will contain.
I had a motion and a second. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? Mr. Tyler Dupren?
I first want to thank Mr. Martin for all of the hard work that he's been putting into this sales proposal. As we said earlier today before our ceremony, we know that LaFouche has maintained its third in the state ranking, which can be contributed to our hard work, teachers, students, faculty, staff, parents, all stakeholders. And I'm very proud that we are able to offer this on an election ballot because our teachers, faculty, and staff, all employees need to be compensated for the tremendous amount of hard-working effort that they put in. And I think this is just going to, you know, barely solve the issue, but it's going to at least catch us up. And I... And I truly believe that all of our employees are very deserving of this. So I ask the public to help support us in this endeavor so we can truly reward and compensate our teachers and all staff like they need to be.
Thank you, Mr. Duprin. Any other public comment? Any other board comment? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
A whole horn we agree with Mr. Duprin said our judiciary department definitely needs this and deserves it.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Anybody else? If not, we'll vote. Motion passage unanimously. Six, approval of policy procedure, policy and procedure committee recommendations as per meeting held October seventeen, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Ray Bernard?
Madam President, I'd like to read through all of these policies at one time, and if there are any questions, we can stop and discuss something back then.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
Approve revisions to policy EBBC, school and student safety, EBBC, emergency crisis management, I S fines and charges, and approve the deletion of policy JC D A G, threats of terrorism or violence, and that particular policy was involved with the school and student safety. I move that to speed, sir.
Motion by Mr. Ray Bernard, second by Mr. Troy Duprin. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll, yes, sir, excuse me?
My I's are deceiving me. I said I S deceiving me.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard, so that would replace J S student fines and charges. We'll vote? Motion passage unanimously. Seven, new business, to introduce new administrators and district staff members. Mr. Morton?
Yeah, the first new administrator that I'm very proud to announce is Ms. Celeste Barreau, Assistant Principal at the Rose Cut Off Middle School.
Thank you for the opportunity to work with Ms. Legord at LCO. I appreciate it, and I look forward to continuing our leadership to growing LCO and LaFouche. Thank you.
I'm also very happy to introduce our new business manager, Ms. LaFon Ortiz.
Looking forward to this challenge. Following a manager with thirty-nine years' experience and history of successful financial management is a challenge, but it's one that I'm looking forward to. We have an excellent business department team, and I know that together we'll continue to make LaFouche proud. So, thank you.
And of course, our new assistant business manager, Ms. Chastity Eme.
Thank you. I look forward to having an opportunity to discuss.
Ms. LaFon, I know we, we congratulated our previous business manager on his last meeting, I think, three or four times, maybe it was five. But congratulations on your first as business manager, so thank you very much.
B, to report, to receive a report of LaFouche Parish Agriculture Extension Service Program, Ms. Donna, LSU Ag Office.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We appreciate your time and also your support as we continue to, to serve the residents of LaFouche Parish. I've given out a report to you. I'm not gonna go through it all because you can read through it at your leisure, but I'll kinda give you some of the highlights. In the agriculture area, we had a sugarcane field day that was held in July. Matt Foster is our agronomist, and he held the field day, and presentations for the field day included sugarcane weed control, sugarcane varieties, billet planting and seedling program, and over a hundred thirty farmers attended the workshop. Also, in our fisheries area, a workshop for our crawfish producers was held at our office in Bracelet by Nicole Lundberg, who's our fisheries agent. The workshop discussed production and processing trends in the crawfish industry, and it was well received. As far as our nutrition area, Becky Goutro, who is our nutrition agent, conducted a couple of series of three classes, which was a kids chef camp, and this is the first time she did it this year, and it was very successful, and she plans on doing it again. We had forty-two children register that completed three workshop days. She prepared physical activity and nutrition lessons, as well as food safety and kitchen cooking one-on-one activities, and it was well received as well. Becky is also implementing a four-week program in collaboration with the city of Thibodeau at Felchay Park. Participants are learning how to make small changes that will lead to healthy lives. There's also gonna be a grocery store tour that's incorporated with the series. Our SNAP agent, which is Amanda Gibson, is, she is, well, I'm not sure if she's presently doing, but she has done the Kids in the Kitchen curriculum, which was presented at the Wallace Community Center. Note, that was in June or July, so it's not, she's not doing it right now. Kids learn the important topics about food safety, hygiene, night skills while being hands-on with the ingredients. And I'm also a 4-H agent, along with Teddy Falls, and we were very busy this summer as usual. One of the things that we do every summer is we take kids to camp, and eighty-seven LaFouche Parish 4-H members, as well as eight junior leaders, and we had some four, four adult leaders to attend as well. The theme was 4-H Camp: Living the Dream. Some of you have been to 4-H Camp. It's been in existence for years and years, and it's bigger and better than ever. Each club member selected an educational track to experience each morning. They learned about food and fitness, about set, outdoor adventures. They explored Louisiana wetlands. They also had an artist within that they could learn about, renewable energy, and they could get their hunter's safety certificate as well. In September, we started to enroll new members. I, I, I'm hoping that our enrollment is up this year. We work hard to increase that enrollment every year. We have thirty-five parish schools that we go to monthly. The students learn about 4-H and how they can get involved, and this year we're focusing on set. Our first lesson was called Roller Coasting into Physics, in which we were, they were able to construct a roller coaster using pipe insulation and tape. They had a wonderful time doing that. Through the series of lessons, the students will develop an understanding of science, engineering, and technology, as well as exploring various careers, possibilities in those different areas. This year, we're doing something, this month, we're doing something in the chemistry area, so we look forward to those meetings every month, and I think the kids do well. And, and, I, I thank y'all for, again, for giving us that support to go into the schools and do what we do. Definitely appreciate it. Also, some upcoming activities, Sugar and Seafood, can I see Mr. Frank? I know, I can see him. It's our cookery contest. That's our first big cookery contest, and we have workshops that go on. We have over six hundred dishes that are entered into the contest. We're still looking for judges. So if anybody would like to come, and Mr. Frank can attest to the fact that that, it's, it's a good deal, huh? He covers lunch and supper. So if anybody would like to come, and Judge, please call our office. I'll make sure you get on that list of judges, and I promise you you'll come back next year. We also have Challenge Camp coming up. That's for our seventh and eighth graders. We're taking them to Abbeyville, to the Acadiana Back to Center, where they learn team building and challenging activities. Our Fall Livestock Show is coming up. That's gonna be November twenty-third, so we invite y'all over to the Ag Building to come and witness the, all the responsibility and commitment it takes in raising these animals. And there's also gonna be our Poultry and Pet Day on December seventh, so you're all invited to each one of those activities. So thank you very much. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Teddy Falls. She's gonna introduce one of our 4-H club members. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Just to echo what Ms. Donna said, I'm a 4-H agent as well. It's my second year, so I'm new to this. I truly enjoy meeting with all the kids every month. We have a little bit over twelve hundred members so far, so I love meeting with them. The activities that we offer to them with youth development and different leadership skills is amazing to see them grow just in the short two years that I've been here. I can see a difference. I brought Cole with me tonight. He is one of our outstanding seniors. He has participated in many, many events throughout the years. Currently, he shows livestock. He is a junior leader officer. He's active on our summer trips. He competes at 4-H University, which is at LSU over the summer, and he's on the second-place state-winning livestock judging team. So he has a pretty diverse realm of everything that happens in 4-H. He has something new that he's taken on this year, and it's something new for the entire state, so I wanted to let him talk to you guys about it.
Good evening, everyone. Like you said, my name is Cole Martin. I'm currently a senior at Central LaFouche Parish, excuse me, I'm sorry. And I've been active in 4-H the past nine years, and this past summer, as, meeting as well of the rest of LaFouche Parish, traveled to LSU 4-H University, where I decided to run for the, the, the youth 4-H Well-Its-A-Bass Team. And fortunately, I was chosen as one of the nine kids across the state to serve on Team Power Darko here. This team came together for a sole purpose, to, to train kids across the state to become advocates for wetlands, and to train them to be knowledgeable in all the threats that, that threaten our wetlands, and what ideas can we develop to combat these, these threats? To really show how, how vital our wetlands are to our state economy, tourism, and things like that. So this past summer, me and my fellow team traveled to the Rockefeller Center in the bottom left-hand of the state, and basically we all met with wildlife and fisheries agents to discuss different endangered species and threats facing wildlife, and, and we trained on how to conduct different outreach events, we planned out social media, blogs, and topics, and stuff like that. And I'm actually traveling again this Friday to Toledo Bend for our second retreat to, to further expand on our ideas and plan for the, our events to, to, for, to come, and I'll do such as that. So, thank you.
You have any questions for us, or?
I'd like to thank Cole for representing our, our school district. As we gave many awards before, you definitely one of the shining stars within the district. I'm sure Mr. Morton would agree. Thank you very much.
Ms. Petita?
I just want to thank the 4-H agents, and you know, you're always thanking us for working with us, but we thank you for what you bring to our students. It really helps to give them a well-rounded education. We certainly appreciate the relationship that we've had for a long, long time. Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Frank, you wanna say anything about the?
Really looking forward to being the judge.
Thank God very much.
Okay. A, memorial resolutions. A, Ms. Linda Porche, retired professional school counselor, Ms. Mary Petita.
Ms. Linda Porche retired on the LaFouche Parish School District on August the twelfth, nineteen ninety-eight, as a professional elementary school counselor at South Thibodeau Elementary School. Ms. Porche served as a professional middle school counselor at the Rose Cut Off Middle School. Ms. Porche retired on June the twenty-ninth, twenty, uh, two thousand and ten, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twelve years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded in a special page of our minutebook.
Thank you very much, Ms. Petita, regarding Ms. Linda Porche. Mr. Amadi, can you maybe address Mr. Archer?
Madam President, from me, I'd like to divert the question to Mr. Dr. Michelle, if you would. Would you care to stand, make your statement, please?
I did. There was, there was a statement at the beginning that said that the item seven C might become unnecessary because of his announcement. There was no motion to alter the agenda, to change it, amend it, and because it was posted per legal regulations, I would still like my time for the, for comment.
Mr. Amadi, could you?
Yeah. Would the board members wish to withdraw that, that agenda item now that Mr. Just Clair had designed?
Yes. All in favor of removing that agenda item? Motion, Mr. Troy Duprin, second, Ms. Randy Schwes. Everybody in favor? Motion passage unanimously. Agenda item is removed.
When you alter the agenda, don't you need public comment on that, when you're changing it?
Dr. Michelle, with all due respect, the, the reason that the board brought this motion was to convey to Mr. Just Clair their wish that he would resign from the board. He has done that. This isn't a forum where anything goes. This board regulates the tone. It regulates the business before it. So if there is something that you want to add, it's just not before this, this deliberative group. And you certainly can make any statement you want, just not here right now. So that's my legal advice to you all, to move on.
And that's what you had said before. Thank you, Mr. Amadi. I appreciate that, that legal opinion. I apologize for interrupting the memorial resolutions. Thank you, Mr. Archer, for addressing that item. We're going to be, Mr. Richard Dupree, right, that was, this is right after Ms. Linda Porche. Thank you, Ms. Petita, again, for that statement about Ms. Porche. Mr. Dupree is Mr. Joey DePlantis.
Mr. Richard Dupree was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-three, as a school bus driver. Mr. Dupree retired on June first, nineteen ninety-five, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-two years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minutebook.
Thank you very much, Mr. DePlantis. C, Ms. Rose Adams, retired teacher. Mr. Ray Bernard?
Yes, Ms. Rose Adams was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on September fifth, nineteen fifty, as a teacher at the Rose Cut Off Junior High School. Ms. Adams retired on May thirty-first, nineteen eighty-four, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for thirty-four years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minutebook.
Thank you, Mr. Ray Bernard. D, Ms. Yuland Vizier, retired child nutrition technician. Mr. Al Archer?
Ms. Yuland Vizier was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on October eighth, nineteen eighty-four, as a child nutrition technician at Cut Off Elementary School. Ms. Vizier retired on October seventh, nineteen ninety-four, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of ten years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minutebook.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
E, Ms. Dolores Streams, retired paraprofessional. Ms. Tina Babbin?
Ms. Dolores Streams was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on September eighteenth, nineteen eighty, as a paraprofessional at Acadian Development Training Center. Ms. Streams was also a paraprofessional at Thibodeaux Elementary School. Ms. Streams retired on September twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-three, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirteen years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our minutebook.
Thank you, Ms. Babbin. Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our minutebook. Nine, executive session. A, consider going into executive session pursuant to provisions LA RS forty-two seventeen seven for the following purpose, to consider the findings of the superintendent regarding a student expulsion appeal, student aid pursuant to LPSD policy JDE. Do I have a motion to enter executive session? Motion by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, second by Mr. Tyler Duprin. All in favor to enter executive session? Motion passage unanimously. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move into executive session, can I even announce you?
Sure.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Casey Shermy. She's in the audience tonight. She was awarded by LaFouche, uh, Louisiana Association of Principals as being the Outstanding Assistant Principal of the State of Louisiana.
Okay, before we move into executive, on Mr. Dr. Gia?
So, I'd like to just make two more announcements specific to, um, Thibodeau High School volleyball team and South LaFouche High School volleyball team, both qualified to make the state playoffs. Thibodeau has played already and was unsuccessful, but played with valor is what I would say. I would be very proud of them, and I'm not sure how South LaFouche turned out.
South LaFouche is playing tomorrow evening at five o'clock against Landry Walker Home.
So I just wanted to congratulate them on that.
We're going to do B at the same time, to consider going into executive session pursuant, pursuant to provisions LARS forty-two seventeen seven for the following purpose, to consider the findings of the superintendent regarding a student expulsion appeal, and B, pursuant to policy LPSD, policy JED. Do I have a motion to move into executive session for student B? Motion by Mr. Al Archer, second by Mr. Randy Schwess, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We move into executive session. It's a regular session. Motion by Mr. Troy Dufren, second by Dr. Mary Grove, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are back in regular session. A, A, I need a motion to uphold the superintendent's decision on student A based on the discipline received by the student. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Ray Bernard, second by Ms. Valerie Boujois, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. B, I need a motion on the floor to uphold the superintendent and or designee's decision for student B in regard to the discipline received. Motion by Ms. Tina Babin, second by Mr. Clyde DePlantis. Everybody in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Ten, tentative dates of future meetings. A, Transportation Committee, Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. B, Land of Facilities Management Committee meeting, Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. C, Insurance Committee meeting, Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand nineteen. D, Finance Committee meeting, Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand nineteen. E, Policy and Procedure Committee meeting, Thursday, November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. F, Academics Committee meeting, Thursday, November first, two thousand nineteen. G, Advisory Committee, Monday, December second, two thousand nineteen. And H, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, December fourth, two thousand nineteen, at six P.M. Before we adjourn, yes, Mr. Dufren?
I will not be here November twenty, through November thirty, so.
Thank you very much, sir, for that. We did have a birthday this week, Ms. Quinn Martinez, so if we can sing her happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Quinn. Happy birthday to you.
Quinn, I know we appreciate everything you do do. Ms. Bernard?
Yes, I'd like to commend the expulsion committee for a professional job that they've done and made the, the affirmation of this case easy for us. Thank you very, thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Any other comments, Mr. Archer?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I guess with the resignation tonight, we'll keep in touch as force the process to, um, taking care of that, that seat, right? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Mr. Schwess?
Anybody seen Don Goody?
Wear the world's on, huh? Any further comments from the board? If not, we are adjourned.